Welcome everyone to December 18th, Lower Southampton Township Board of Supervisors Meeting. We could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to deliver a order for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just like to announce that Head of Zoning, Mike Italia, will be zooming in this evening. Our Township Engineer, John Everett, is off tonight. Our Finance Director, Mr. Ryan, is a little under the weather and we wish him a speedy recovery. The Board of Supervisors had canceled tonight's executive session. The Board of Supervisors had a workshop at 6:30 where we had spoken to Mr. Italia and Mr. Dylan and the Board in regards to our Town Center ordinance and revising it. Mr. Coppins had spoke about adding additional parking in our woodland area here on township property. Mr. Mulholland had spoke about how the Nishamity High School Gym Night Committee had reached out for the possible use of the Russell Elliott Clubhouse for some temporary storage for gym night props. He also spoke about his programs and also spoke about our Christmas housing decorating contest. Mr. Galdo had gone through line items two through seven pertaining to our final budgets that are on our agenda tonight. And Mr. Castle had brought up, as a lot of us were affected, about a week or so ago, we had a large tree fall down on Brownsville Road. It affected the power in a few areas in our township and possibly to see what we can do to prevent things like that from happening in the future. And with that said, tonight, we have a lot of happy, smiling faces out there. Tonight is a great night. These are special nights when we have in front of us promotions. Tonight, we have a promotion for Officer Jason Alosi to Corporal tonight. So before we actually start with the whole kit and caboodle, I'm going to ask Chief Krimmel if he has a couple of comments. Tell us how great Officer Alosi is Corporal.
I'll try to tell the truth. Okay, Jason has been the Lower Southampton Police since 2018. Prior to that, he was a Philadelphia Police Officer from 2006 until 2016, or I'm sorry, 2018. His last assignment in Philadelphia Police was at the Five Squad Tactical Unit. He has an associate's degree from the University of Phoenix. In addition to his patrol duties, Jason's a firearms instructor, an armor, and a drone pilot for the department. He has received numerous commendations from both the Philadelphia and Lower Southampton Police Department throughout his career. And he's been married to his wife Maria for 22 years. They have three kids, 20, 18, and 17, and they live in a neighborhood here. Terrific. Good guy.
All right, sounds like we have a great candidate for a Corporal. So at this time, we're going to put a motion on the floor to authorize the promotion for Officer Jason Alosi to Corporal effective December 18th, 2024. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion to authorize promotion of Officer Jason Alosi to Corporal effective December 18th, 2024.
All right, thank you, Mr. Castle. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowman. Any discussion from the Board? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stentioned? Motion carries. Now that the motion is carried, we are going to invite the Honorable Judge Baronowski to handle the swearing in.
Follow your lead, sir. You want to hold that for me? Then place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
I, Jason Alosi.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
The laws of the Commonwealth.
And this governmental subdivision.
Sorry?
And this governmental subdivision.
Subdivision.
And that I will uphold.
I will uphold.
Obey.
Obey.
Enforce.
Enforce.
The law.
The law.
And discharge the duties of my office.
And discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Without consideration to a person's race.
Without consideration to a person's race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap or disability.
Handicap or disability.
As a police corporal.
As a police corporal.
For the Lower Southampton Township Police Department.
For the Lower Southampton Police Department.
Congratulations, sir.
At this time, we are going to break for a couple of minutes just for some fellow opportunities with the family and friends. Yes, he's old. Alrighty, everyone, that was terrific. We always love having nights like tonight when we see promotions. At this time, I would like to open the floor to public comment. If anybody would like to come up, please state your name, your address. If you could log it in our book, we'd appreciate it. And as always, a three-minute time limit.
All right, so my name is Joan Doris. I live on Anna Avenue. So the last time we were here, we were talking about the budget. And I think something that really hit us all that we're here was how much we're spending on our police department. So what we would like, as people that are taxpayers, is to have a breakdown of how that money, what are officers getting paid? How much are we paying for medical? How much are we paying for that building? I mean, we want the breakdown to see if there's any way to save versus raising our taxes. So now we're in here, we have a promotion. So I mean, is our tax going to this promotion? So we want to know what's going on. Seventy percent of our taxes go to the police department. And I just looked it up tonight, and it's an 83% increase in crime. So what's going on in this neighborhood? So that's my comment.
Thank you, Mrs. Doris. Mr. Galdo, wouldn't be an issue, right, if we could have Mr. Ryan and her catch up and discuss some of her questions?
Sure, that's not an issue. There is a, in the budget, is a detailed line item of call centers or cost line items that are in the police call center. And if you have like any type of questions as far as detail, what are those costs? So let's say you $50,000 in a particular line item, he would be able to break it down in detail what those costs were in a respective year.
What are the salary? That's what I'm concerned about.
The salaries are all open. A right to know, a right to know would have to be provided, and that could be provided at a later date too.
Yes, we would want to know what the salaries are and what the medical that we're paying out.
Yeah, I would, Chief, let me, I would say as far as the medical, your medical cost has been basically, if you look through all probably the last five to eight years as far as medical costs, we actually have a high deductible HRA. I'm also, as well as one of those individuals in that plan as a group. So when we went out as far as purchasing power, it was a little bit better to have other people in addition, since we have a smaller police force, to have that globally. Our purchasing power, we're probably, probably in year one of that contract that we did, we saved the taxpayers $250,000 in year one with this new model that we went through. Over the course of
Say year one, what are you talking about, year one?
Meaning what we paid prior year before we tweaked the healthcare model. So
You tweaked the healthcare model.
This was well over, I would say, 10 years ago. So, but if you look at that throughout the whole 10 years, if you look at the line item for healthcare, it has been almost the exact same number each year, each year. You cannot say out and go on the market in today's world to say your healthcare has not gone up. Matter of fact, this respective year, our healthcare cost did not go up.
Mr. Doris, if it's going to get into a back and forth, I want you to use your full three minutes at the microphone so it gets on, gets recorded, because right now, nobody's hearing it.
I didn't know it was going to go back.
I'm not saying you did it on purpose. I'm just saying, if you want it to be caught by the public, you need to do it at the microphone.
So I know you can hear me back there because I've watched a video.
Yeah.
I watched the video and you could hear me. But anyway, back and forth, when I say that the price per person for medical, like what is that cost? Like what's the salary? Because when I get a report at the end of the year for my, for my job.
Yep.
I get what I got paid in my salary, and then they send me a separate document of what my medical benefits were and what that cost was, so that I have both documents. What are my overall expenses?
Yeah, we don't go into that, that level of detail, but I can say to you, if you have 32 officers and eat, let's say it this way, our insurance is based off of age. So it's age dependent in your claims utilization. So if we have $700,000 in cost of medical, 32 people divided it, going into that 700,000 is what we're paying on average per officer.
That sounds a lot. That sounds like a lot. Do the math. I mean, I can't do the math off the top.
Chief, could you take two minutes, two seconds rather, to address the increase in crime?
Three minutes are up.
I just have a question. Did you say 83%?
She'll get back.
Eighty-three percent is not even possible. It's incorrect.
All right, thank you.
Is Jane Sowieski, not Miss, okay, on that wire lane? So we have, um, I don't know why. Okay, so we have 32 officers, right? And they're getting paid anywhere between $130 and $150,000 a year.
That depends on what you
Joe, it's comment.
Okay.
I'm just trying to be So, all right, so we just need to, we need to know the numbers, because that sounds extravagant to us that pay taxes. And now we're increasing our taxes, and 70% of our taxes go to the police department. And I'll tell you, they're not responsive. I mean, we have a 93-year-old tenant who called because he had a half-naked man not going on his back door that wasn't even a door that he uses, and they never came out to see him. So it was just, you know, and he called. You know, so it's like, you know, if these guys are like on the ball, then maybe they need top of the line, but they're making more money than our residents. They're making more money than, you know, people with master's degrees here. So let's kind of redo this. I mean, if they're getting paid overtime, maybe we need to not have them in overtime. You know, if this was corporation, a corporation does not allow overtime. It does not allow overtime. And really, you know, our president, our President Jacob doesn't allow overtime. So we have to find a way to reduce these costs. This cost is extrabinent, extrabinent. So we would like to find a way to represent the folks that are paying these guys salaries, that we're trying to be more efficient. I mean, you're increasing our taxes. The sewer bill goes up every year. We're getting increases in our taxes. And, you know, I don't see the value here. I don't see the value. I mean, you guys pay taxes. Have you seen the value?
I would say the value is there. And I'm only going to speak just as the Township Manager and as the former's finest director. As far as costs here, we have contained costs all throughout this, I would say, 12-year process that
We've also had new houses go up and stuff, and more tax
I will tell you this, we only represent 6% of your tax base. So I can't speak to the county, and I can't speak to the school component. I can speak to the township component. At 6%, on average, we're getting about $350, $360, maybe $400 for the average house. We're running, we're running the police force. We're taking care of all emergency services for the township. At 6%, that is, there's not that many townships, and you can do your research. I will put us up against any other township in Bucks County as far as cost efficiency. Now, I would say do the research. I'm going to do our research.
We'll look at the
We can have communication, but for that information, I would need a right to know to present certain information.
Okay, well, I'd like to
Not an issue.
I'd like to do the research.
Do you have a date on this supposed to call that got blown off or ballpark? Because it's going to get investigated as what happened. Yeah, absolutely.
It was a 93-year-old name.
This time, what's it look for?
I have, maybe I'd not go to school.
Yeah, he just needs the date, the date it was called at, or who called.
I'll find out. I'll ask if you can give me a date.
Okay, because that doesn't happen. I just can't imagine any circumstance where it would happen. So we're going to look into it.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Anybody else for public comment?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Sounds like you ladies are looking for Doge. My name is Glenn Stevens. I live at 345 East Myrtle Avenue. It is at that location where multiple crimes were committed against me. Mike Italia, the man hiding on television, made those, somehow made those crimes legal. I called the police anyway, and the policeman spoke to Mike Italia, and for some reason, that oath that that new corporal just took, Mike Italia told the policeman arrived to me to ignore that oath and to not serve and protect me. I find it appalling. Now, Mr. Petriato, you brought up something recently? I very much like to tell you, it was a month ago. I've been here, by the way, I've been here every Wednesday this month, and this is the first time I got in. I would like to speak about that. But something the chairman said really intrigued me, and it has, rides on the thing with the taxes. You said that you spent too much money already on my issue. Can you tell me where that money was spent? What did you spend that money on?
You know, I
You said this last time we were here.
I'm not going to quote my exact words, because I
Well, something, I'm not quoting.
It was something, something along the lines of that, you know, we have invested money. We have had some of our professionals come out, speak to you.
Who was the recipient of these checks?
Excuse me?
Who was the recipient of this money? What did you spend this money on?
When we hire, when we have a professional, whether it's a police officer, whether it's our zoning officer, whether it's Mr. Dylan who looks into the matter.
So it was Mr. Dylan who got the money?
That's not, that's not free.
It was Mr. Dylan who got the money?
Mr. Stevens.
It should be an easy thing. Like, I didn't want to spend, I didn't want you to spend a dime on it, sir. When I came to you on the down low, so Mike wouldn't get arrested and Mike wouldn't lose his job, I thought we would have a little pow-wow. Maybe you and I, definitely Mr. Ottinger, since he had that job at one point, we could all sit down and talk about this and come up with it. Instead, you went straight to Mr. Dylan and started paying him my tax dollars so that he could defend a non-resident against a resident taxpayer. How bizarre is that?
Oh, I would have a lot to say, Mr. Stevens, but unfortunately, it's things that we've already said here in the past and
Mr. Stevens, what I would say in my issue is that there's an assigned cost. When I spent 45 minutes with you the day I visited your house, I, there was an assigned cost. That took me for, to go visit your issue and take, try to assist you with your issue. There's an assigned cost for Joe Galdo to go out there. And that, I think that's what
Exactly.
So that was it? Was that 45 minutes?
Well, I'm saying to you, there's a cost
I get that. I totally get that. I would like to know where the rest of this money went. I believe it all went to Mr. Dylan, who played defense attorney for a non-resident against a resident.
I would, I would say, sir, just to answer your question real quick, is, there's a very de minimis amount, and the payables are before you every week, or every time we have a board meeting, the account payables are right in front of you.
So was it not much money you spent? You said it, it sounded like it was a lot of money that you spent.
What is, what professionals were paid. So you can look at it, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens, three minutes.
Like I said, all next year, we'll, we'll talk about the issue you just brought up. It is another reason why we should look at the film that I had. It will, it will show that, you said it was a permanent structure.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens.
It wasn't really, and I can prove that with this film. I think we should all watch this film.
Thank you.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Well, no, I think the township should say.
All right, thank you.
I think, I think the people
Mr. Stevens.
That
Merry Christmas, Mr. Stevens. Thank you. Your time is up.
Mike Italia is taking away their tax dollars, and he's doing illegal things.
All right. Hello, Mr. Chrisanthus, how are you, sir?
Fine. First of all, I'd like to start off by wishing everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and Happy New Year.
Thank you, same to you.
Yeah. Last meeting, I went over my time, so I apologize. We talked about raising monies, you know, about collected, people who hadn't paid the township, cut costs, but really, we really needed is a look at the spending. That's the biggest driver of deficits. And I was kind of curious with the vote of the Board, we had a 600, Nick said there was a 600,000 deficit we're running this year?
Potential.
Potential. So they only covered 75% of it. So what happens to the $150,000 shortfall?
You've got a reserve balance that's been built up over a few million
And how much is that reserve balance, Joan?
On the top of my head, about 3.2 million unreserved or unassigned.
Now, is this the budget deficit going to continue next year, the next two years?
Well, by having, by having a potential millage increase, potential millage increase, it actually kind of assists in not having that type of reserve fund balance being touched. So it's our job as directors and as chief to make sure in the respective year that costs stay within the parameters. If there's any variances, the Board is informed and so forth. But the main thing is by having the millage increase, it kind of realigns the fund balance, or protects the fund balance, but realigns your hold-on, which is your main operating fund that provides your police, assists with fire services, emergency services, even the rescue squad, public works, for bottles and so forth, recreation programs, and just general administration.
Now, some basic math, 600,000, I have a $14 million budget. That's like 3%, 3 cents on the dollar. There's no way that could be, the spending can be cut. I mean, I can't believe
3 cents on the dollar, I'll take that every day.
Well, that's what it is. 600,000 on 13 million.
I'll take that every day.
Yeah, but I mean, is there any way, I mean, we're the ones paying the taxes.
I understand that part. I get that part. All I'm saying, David, is we basically cut back, I think it was about $560,000 in here. Again, your appropriations, the way this budget is set up, you have very conservative revenue, meaning we'll probably exceed that.
Okay.
As far as the expenses, we have appropriations in there that may never be used, but they're there to present flexibility, operational flexibility for the respective Board.
Okay, last year with your conservative, last year with your conservative numbers, did we fall below at or exceed expectations?
For this respective year, we're basically at the number that
And how about the year before?
Same thing.
So you're at. So we're, so you're pretty accurate then with the 600,000 deficit and the 150,000 will be made up by the reserve fund?
Again, there's experiences that happen in the course of a year.
Correct.
Experiences.
Yeah, emergencies, things like that. Yeah, that's understandable. Our government does that all the time, right? National government. But I mean, there's, I think we need to take a harder look. I think our citizens, and I'm speaking for the two ladies here, about spending, you know, every effort needs to be made to reduce spending. I mean, look at our national government. Both parties spend like drunken salaries.
Mr. Chrisanthus?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alrighty. Anybody else for public comment? All right, seeing none. Now we will move on to our consent agenda. Line item one, A, approval of minutes November 20th, 2024. B, approval of budget minutes November 20th, 2024. C, approval of minutes November 26th, 2024. D, approval of accounts payable December 18th, 2024. E, approval of certain reoccurring monthly bills December 18th, 2024. F, ratification of accounts payable December 11th, 2024. And G, ratification of certain reoccurring monthly bills December 11th, 2024. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we adopt a consent agenda for December 18th, 2024.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion from the board? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Line item two, adopt final 2025 annual operating budget. Mr. Galdo, sir.
Thank you, Board Chair. Again, just as we said in work session, this particular operating fund budget as being proposed is with a 2.25 mil increase. The revenue, which is conservative in nature, is listed in your budgets or at your desk at $13,849,882. The expenditures have been reworked. We carved out about $560,000 of potential expenditures and refined it down to $14,624, $624,736 with a potential reserve that's there just for additional flexibility purposes of being utilized of $774,854. Doubt that would be used through the course of the year. So, just looking for approval for the preliminary budget for the proposed.
All right, Mr. Gallo. So, the motion would read for line item two, to adopt the final 2025 annual operating budget as stated by Mr. Gallo. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Castle. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Perrotto. Any discussion from the board? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
No.
Abstentions? Motion carries three a's, two nays. All right. Line item number three, adoption of 2025 capital reserve fund budget. Mr. Gallo, once again, sir.
Thank you, Board Chair. The conservative revenue that's estimated for the capital reserve, which funds any type of major construction projects, any type of assets like police vehicles, public works vehicles, and so forth, the revenue is at $961,289. Again, that's not inclusive of any potential RDA grants. Your expenditures, again, I doubt we would use all these expenditures. But it's more about the appropriations and flexibility is projected at $1509,200 with a potential reserve that would be utilized of $547,911. Again, I doubt we would use all that flexibility. But again, we don't know the RDA grants at this point. So, looking for approval for tonight.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gallo. So, the motion would read for line item three, to adopt the final 2025 capital reserve fund budget. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Perrotto. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Castle. Any discussion from the board? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
No.
Abstentions? Motion does carry three a's, two nays. Line item number four, adopt final 2025 sewer capital reserve fund budget. Mr. Gallo, sir.
Thank you, Board Chair. For the sewer capital reserve fund, the projected revenue, conservative in nature, is 220,000. Expenditures at max appropriations for respective capital construction that would be needed in a respective year in an emergency is 485,000. Potential reserve to be utilized is $265,000. Again, more for flexibility purposes, Board Chair. So, looking for approval.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gallo. So, the motion would read to adopt the final 2025 sewer capital reserve fund budget. Do we have a motion?
So, moved.
Thank you, Mr. Castle. And I will make the second on that. Any discussion from the board? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
No.
Abstentions? Motion carries three a's, two nays. Line item five, adopt final 2025 library capital reserve fund budget. Mr. Gallo, sir.
Thank you, Board Chair. The revenue is projected as if the local share grant or the multimodal grant would have been received. So, the revenue booked in this particular library capital budget would be for $152,300. The expenditure, again, with the appropriations, if the grant were to be bestowed upon the library, would be at $162,000. And the potential reserve to be used is $9,700. Looking for approval, Board Chair.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gallo. So, the motion would read to adopt the final 2025 library capital reserve fund budget. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Perrotto. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Castle. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
No.
Abstentions? Motion does carry three a's, two nays. Line item six, adopt 2025 operating reserve fund budget. Mr. Gallo, sir.
Thank you, Board Chair. Again, the operating reserve fund sits basically as a backdrop to your O1 fund, just to give it coverage. And over the years, we've built up a little bit of a cushion there, well over $1 million. The revenue projected there, which is basically your interest income earnings, is $20,000, which is conservative in nature. Expenditures, if a transfer needed to be going over to the O1 fund, again, prop it up if needed, just a built-in redundancy. Expenditures of $800,000. Potential reserve to be utilized is $780,000. Looking for approval, Board Chair.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Gallo. So, the motion would read to adopt the final 2024 operating reserve fund budget. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Perrotto. Do you have a second?
Second.
All right. Seeing any discussion from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
No.
Abstentions? Motion carries, once again, three a's, two nays. All right. We move on to line item seven. Consider adoption of resolution 2024-41 tax levy for 2025. Mr. Gallo, sir.
Yeah, Board Chair, thank you. Again, your mills will be going from projected from 14.08 to 16.633 mills, which takes into consideration the 2.25 mil increase. The designation for general would be at 5.73 mills. Your debt would be at 6.65 mills. Streetlight would be at .55 mills. Fire would be at 2.1 mills. Recreation would be increased from .4 to .80 mills. And rescue would be at .5 mills, .50 mills. So, we're looking for approval on that resolution, Board Chair.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gallo. So, the motion would read to adopt resolution 2024-41 tax levy for 2025. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Castle. Do we have a second?
I will second that, Chair.
Thank you very much. Mr. Perrotto, any discussion from the board?
I have something to say.
Yes.
While I appreciate your efforts in trying to cut that, some of that budget, I'm still not going to be able to support the tax increase.
Thank you, Mr. Ottinger. Any other discussion from the board? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
No.
Abstentions? Motion carries three a's, two nays. All right. Now, we move on to line item number eight. Consider authorizing the township manager to sign the TE-160 PennDOT form for do not block intersection LED signs. Mr. Coffin, sir.
Yes, for do not block the intersection, the SAI traffic engineer is just about the point to be able to submit design plans and permit revisions to PennDOT to get their approval. So, we would need the signature.
All right.
So, the signature basically is for accepting the maintenance responsibility of the LED signals. That's basically what we're doing right here.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much, gentlemen. So, the motion would read to authorize the township manager to sign the TE-160 PennDOT form for do not block intersection LED signs. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Bowman, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ottinger. Any discussion from the board? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries five to zero. Line item number nine, consider authorizing the township manager to sign purchase orders and/or contracts related to the remaining ARPA dollars. Mr. Gallo, sir.
Thank you, Board Chair. This just assists the township. The US Treasury basically wants any remaining ARPA dollars to be locked down. So, basically, by purchase order and/or contract, we're going to be doing both contract and purchase orders to lock down any remaining ARPA dollars that could be utilized. The funds will be most likely utilized for all recreation projects that you just approved at the last board meeting. So, they will be the contracts that we will be working on and setting up purchase orders for.
All right. Thank you very much.
Which sets up compliance.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gallo. So, the motion would read to authorize township manager to sign purchase orders and/or contracts related to the remaining ARPA dollars. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll give that to Mr. Ottinger. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowman. Any discussion from the board? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries five all. Line item 10, consider authorizing the township manager to sign two stormwater controls and best management practices, operations, and maintenance agreements for 2343 Brownsville Road and 2351 Brownsville Road. Mr. Dillon, sir.
Yes, you've approved these projects. And part of the resolution of approval was that the property owners had to execute the stormwater management best practices agreements. They've been prepared, reviewed by the engineer, and executed by the property owner. Now, we need them executed by the manager so we can record them.
All right. And correct me, Mr. Dillon, if I'm wrong, but you know, this protects the township. I mean, this is something that we really want to have done. God forbid there's issues down the road.
Yes, so stormwater management have to make sure that it's properly maintained.
Very good, Mr. Dillon. Thank you. So, the motion would read to authorize the township manager to sign two stormwater control and best management practices, operations, and maintenance agreements for 2343 Brownsville Road and 2351 Brownsville Road. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Perrotto. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Castle. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Line item number 11, consider approval of State Representative Jill Hogan's lease and authorize township manager to sign the document. Mr. Gallo, sir.
Thank you, Board Chair. Your packet basically is a new lease. It's actually an addendum to the existing lease, which ran a prior time period of 12/1/22 to 11/30/24. The new time period of this lease would be from 12/1/24 to 11/30/26. In addition to the time period that would be changing, the amount of money on a monthly basis would go from $290 to $315. So, we're looking for approval for tonight.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Gallo. So, the motion would read to approve the lease for State Representative Jill Hogan's lease and authorize township manager to sign documents. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Castle. Any discussion from the board? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries five to zero. All right. Now, we move on to manager's report. Mr. Gallo, sir.
Nothing for tonight, sir.
Nothing for tonight? All right. Supervisor comments. Mrs. Bowman.
I just wanted to wish everybody a happy and safe holiday and Happy New Year. And we'll see you in 2025.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowman. Mr. Perrotto, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I want to congratulate Officer Alessi on his promotion to corporal. We have, you know, a very, very good police department in our area. Very responsive police department. I know everyone has a right to come up to our podium and air their grievances or praise us. We also know that mostly it's 99.9% air their grievances. And that's okay, because this is the public forum for it. But you just can't throw things around. There is no 83% increase in crime in Lower Southampton. Our chief, every month, sends us a report. I don't know where you could come up with those numbers. I don't know how they'd be calculated. But I don't need to defend our, the police department. They do a good job every day. Are we perfect? No. There's nobody that's perfect. But you know, when you call, you get a response. And if someone does not get a response when they call, please call either township manager or the chief himself and let them know that you're not getting the response that you expected. As far as value, you know, again, everybody's got an opportunity to air their grievance. I don't see how anybody can say this township isn't a value. I've lived here since 1994. I'm not a lifelong resident. I came from northeast Philadelphia. If you want to know where there is no value, it's slightly below us. But the services that are offered from this township, for the amount of funds that are collected, are outstanding. And I support our township manager for the way he manages the finances and the application of those revenues that are generated to serve the residents. You can definitely cut costs. Just tell me what service you don't want. And you know, you get three votes for it and you can cut costs. Everybody, there's a service that's being provided that everybody or somebody expects or needs or wants. Is there an excessive amount of services? I don't believe so, but, you know, everybody's entitled to their opinion and, and come up here and, and tell us where we should be looking, um, to try and remedy what their complaint is. Other than that, I just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Holidays to those or others, be safe, be with family, and come back and see us in January. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Perrotto. Mr. Ottinger?
I have exactly the same thing down as you said. You know, I'm not going to sit here and, um-
Feel free.
Have any one bad word to say about any emergency service in this township. Um, 83% crime, chief, can, can you give me any indication of that as accurate, or what's this?
I, I don't have the 24 numbers done yet, because I think we're going to have a, might be a slight decrease this year. Uh, violent crime's definitely a way to end this year. I can, just off the top of my head, um, I'm not sure where that number came from. If it were 83%, I, I retired that year. I'd be embarrassed that day at the door.
Chief, I think they refer to that as fake news, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken.
No, I will investigate that woman's claim, I'll, I'll get back to you on that for sure.
Thank you, we, we do appreciate that, thank you.
Um, as far as the tax increase, you know, I wasn't for the tax increase, I'm paying close to $10,000 a year in taxes, it, living here. My kids go to a good school, I got good protection, you know, I'm happy as a clam, right? So, do I want the taxes, do I want the taxes raised? Of course not. Pay enough in taxes. And, uh, any other question I have is, um, is anybody from the building going to the RDA tomorrow to see if we get any awards, or?
If you want me to, I could certainly do, but, uh, we're, we're supposed to, we're supposed to have our, kind of, Christmas party, but I could certainly-
Did he-
I actually checked, uh, right before this meeting, there's nothing posted, I could pull there, I could certainly pull to Jeff and see if they, if they have an awarding, just to see when the dates are, but there's, there's, we have not received a thing.
They typically send you something the day of the award, right?
Yes.
Well, as soon as you get something, can you send it to us?
Absolutely.
All right. Other than that, um, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, hope don't see anybody until January 6th, how's that sound?
Thank you, Mr. Ottinger. Mr. Castle, sir?
I don't think I have any comments tonight, Mr. Chairman.
You couldn't be so sure.
Thank you to our audience for being out tonight. Um, some of the people have left, but trust me, we hear what you have to say, you keep our feet to the fire, and I appreciate it. Those who are viewing at home or watching us later in the week, thank you for, for being mindful of your township. Please sign up for emails, lowersouthampton township dot org. I just got an email yesterday or today, it's once a week, very informative, that we'll give you an update on our trash service during the holiday season, and I won't repeat that here, because most people should be receiving the email. Thank you to Mr. Gallo for getting our budget through for another year with minimal increase. I know we have fought a 20% inflation rate over the last four years. Our ARPA funds are depleted, and that saved us for the last four years from having a tax increase. So thank you for carrying a sharp pencil, um, to some people in the audience that might question our spending. I review every expenditure, and our department heads hear about it if I have a question, and I scrutinize everything, and not much gets past me, and I'm telling you, um, our department heads are doing a great job, I'm really pleased.
Except the chief.
The chief's doing a great job, because I reviewed his budget, and I, I'm extremely pleased how, how he has, uh, been cracking down on, you know, just frivolous spending. It doesn't exist anymore, especially in 2024. And I want to thank our emergency services, we had a, a major shutdown of Brownsville Road, that took place over two days, our police were there, our road crew was out putting up signs and barricades, and, uh, our firefighters are out there on a volunteer basis, so you can never thank them enough. I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, a Happy Hanukkah, and a Happy New Year, and that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Castle. Um, as I was stating, you know, Mr. Gallo, Mr. Ryan, and you're not here tonight, all the department heads, we want to thank you all for your hard work. It's, you know, it's quite time-consuming. People at home may think that, you know, you know, we voted on this tonight, and, you know, we were given the information, uh, a week ago. I mean, this process starts, correct me if I'm wrong, in, in late September, I believe, correct? So, I mean, you know, this takes, you know, a few months to get to where we are tonight. So, once again, thank you all for, you know, all of your hard work. Um, I'd like to congratulate Officer Alessi again for his promotion, you know, love seeing all the officers out there, all the family and friends, they're, you know, it's terrific when that happens. Always great seeing Judge Baronowski here, too. Merry Christmas to everyone, Happy Holidays, Happy New Year, and with that said, can I get a motion for adjournment?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ottinger. I don't see any need for discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.